All right, good afternoon. It is about six o'clock, a little after six o'clock. This is the meeting of the Paris Zone Commission. Today is October the seventh of 2021, and our call is moving to order. First item that we have is roll call, please. Yes, El Agua de Arroyo?
Present.
Jorge Merengue?
Present.
Jorge Elvenos?
Present.
Abraham Ruedo? Jaime Arvise? Yalu Galde Junior?
Present.
Lilo Galena?
Yeah.
Manuel Asalpas?
Present.
I'm not G. Yarriaga. For the record, we have one. All right, I know that I look at my calendar and I know that Jaime said he was probably gonna not make it. I don't know about ever doing it to Jaime. And, well, if not, can we?
Motion to excuse the commissioners that are absent.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Almost in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item, MIP stands for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, our national republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds, and justice for all. All right. I remember before this consideration, we put the limits of the regular meeting on September sixteenth, 2021.
I assume.
We have motion, we have a second?
Second.
And a second, almost in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Motion carries. Next item, citizens comments, do you have anybody sign up for citizens comments? At this point in time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Our meeting time, six public hearings and recommendations. Public hearing number one. Six, a public hearing, recommendation of annexation of initial zoning of B four, or tract of land, surrounding 48.18 acres, more or less. Describe limits and bounds on the TAD six zero eight, name its annexation track one, Cuatro Vientos one track located east of Cuatro Vientos Road, and south of Wenzel Road. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, shall I make the presentation?
Yes.
For the record, the applicant is Cuatro Vientos South Limited. The engineer of record is topside civil group, Kira Manuel Escamilla. The proposed use is commercial, and the proposed initial zoning is developed in this B four. This is the general location. The layout, track one. aerial view. Surrounding zoning. Future land use. And the staff recommendation. Staff does not support the proposed annexation. The annexation may have impacts on both counties' Wenzel Road realignment project, as funded through the Texas Water Transportation, County Transportation Infrastructure Fund. Staff recommends that the annexation be postponed until this time, as the Wenzel Road realignment project is finalized and accepted by both the city and the county. Staff does not support the initial zoning, as the proposed Wenzel Superbord is not a highway. Staff would be supportive of B three initial zoning designation.
So basically, what happened with this is, in talking to TechStop, if we annexed the road before it's finished, the county would have to reimburse the state back the funds for the road. That, so, all we're asking is just to delay, just in order to get through that process, and then we can come back and annex the property. I spoke to the attorney for the group, and he understood that. I don't know, Rick, if you have any comments?
Yes.
Let me open up the public hearing. This is a public hearing, and those who wish to speak in favor?
Yes. The Calle de Arroyo, topside civil group, representing the client. This is the first we hear of this comment from TechStop, but we do have some technical solutions or better understanding for this, so. I'm gonna be talking about the next five annexations, and I know we're not that at there, but just keep in mind, because it's gonna be the same conversation over and over that way.
Right.
We can speed up the meeting through this. So, basically, what, if we can, Dr. We can pull up, can I control this? Do you have it in your eye, or you wanna? No, no, I was just gonna do the old school, I guess. You want this, or? Yeah. So, little history on this area. Kind of drawn in the overall map here. The area in green, or not, most of the area in green is owned by the city of Laredo. This road comes around here, comes up, comes back down, comes down, and goes this way. That area owned by the city of Laredo is the future site of the sports complex. We're gonna have, hopefully, you know, multiple fields, soccer fields, baseball fields, and so on and so forth in the master plan. This area is already annexed by the city of Laredo. There was a project done by the city of Laredo and Webb County, which is this road here in gray, that's Lomas del Sur. Some of that portion is in the city of Laredo, and the other portion is in the, in the county. This portion right here is in the city of Laredo, that's the annex writer where it says R one. Beyond that point, it's the county. So, county got some funds from the state. TechStop is the pass-through entity that'll pay for those, for the improvements here. The oversight was done by the city and the county in conjunction, because it's both municipalities. I guess, for lack of better words, TechStop, I guess, pays the bill at the end of the day. This right-of-way was already, has already been conveyed to the municipalities, or in this case, to Webb County, since this was already in the city of Laredo. So this right-of-way is owned by the municipalities, city of Laredo and Webb County. We're not trying to annex any part of the road. So, when we first met with staff a while back, this is a long time coming, when we met with staff, we were trying to come up with scenarios on how we should annex this property. Should we include the road? Should we annex it all as one? It ended up being that, in one of our last meetings, we got to a point where, where is the road right now? How far are we in construction? So, the road is probably about ninety-eight percent complete. They're missing a little bit of one covert, and they're gonna, a little bit of the tie-in on TechStop. But if you go out there, it's already blacktop. This road is a big road. So, when we made the determination of how we were gonna annex, the road actually cuts our annexation, because our client doesn't own the road anymore. He doesn't own the right-of-way. So he only owns beyond that right-of-way. So, the comment, and I know Mr. Narra just went back there, the comment is, TechStop does have an issue if the road gets annexed right now. The road's not getting annexed as per these annexations. We're annexing private property beyond the public. Why are we doing this? The sports park is looking to come in next year, at the end of next year. We annex now, by the time it gets finalized, hopefully, in January that gets finalized, we can proceed with plating, building permitting, so that it can come in at the same time that the sports park comes in. So then you have the amenities around the sports park that are gonna complement it. If we wait till January, we're just backtracked six months. By the time we annex, that'd be June, and then, you know, you get through the plating, building permitting, and so it's just a snowball effect that we all know about now. So, the comment by the, by, by Mr. Narra, that TechStop said, I think TechStop, under my understanding, is they're worried about, so the process that they're gonna do is, once this road goes through final inspection, right, it'll, and the plaque gets recorded, that plaque's gonna get recorded, and the signatures on that plaque are city of Laredo and Webb County. Once that plaque gets recorded, that, this, this piece of property gets dedicated over to the public, right? Now, when it gets dedicated over to the public, it's still gonna belong to the county and still gonna belong to the city. If at that point, after it gets recorded, the county wants to deed it over to the city, there is a stipulation here in the, in the code book, in the Texas code book, where it allows for annexations of right-of-way from one municipality to another. Section forty-three dot ten fifty-five, I'll give, I don't know if you want me to keep it up here, but that's, that's a stipulation that allows you to annex, because the city of Laredo can't involuntarily annex, but under the local government code, they're allowed this. So, once it gets recorded, the county can request the city take over the road, and then there will be an annexation process for the right-of-way. Now going back to the comment, again, I'm gonna reiterate, TechStop, I think, is more worried that the actual road where the improvements is getting annexed, that's not getting annexed. Private property is getting annexed, that's not, that has nothing to do with the roadway construction, other than that it just upsets it. The alignments have already been set, the surveys have been done, we helped with this, with these alignments, we did the surveys for these annexations, they follow the roadway, roadway's already on the ground. Hopefully, it's recorded in the next thirty days, and then we move forward. I just ask that we move forward with our annexation, so that we can proceed with our development for the future. I don't know if, so, can I make?
Is that, I'll excuse them.
Right.
So, we're just a little concerned, again, it is with the timing issue, and when we looked up the statute also on the county road part, we did come across this. So the statute tells us that when an annexation comes in, we have to bring in the county road that's adjacent to the annexation. So we're just a little concerned that we might be a little premature in bringing in this piece right now. It's not that we're against it, it's just the timing issue.
I think everybody, I think it's.
So, our concern is with there being an obligation on the county, with their obligation with TechStop, and then if there's an issue of having to reimburse funds or anything like that. So this is kind of where we're coming from, on our concern.
Can I ask you a question? Is this money that was derived from TechStop, was it the grant that was given to counties in order to mitigate the oil and gas activity in different counties in the state? Is it that way?
I am unsure. They had it as the county transportation?
Let me, let me convey to you my experience. We have unpaved streets in the city of Potula. The county received money. The grant was amended to include the city streets, and I had to do a procurement for the engineer to design the streets, and the grant was amended at the state level in order for them to pave with that money the same streets that were in the municipality, and I believe we are currently doing the design for it. And I don't know if it's the same grant, and if it is, it could be without.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Manuel Escamilla for the record. Yes, sir. This is the same CTIF grant money that is also going towards the projects that you're referring to. This is the previous cycle of money that is being spent on this. The, to address some of the things that you're talking about, the, the, TechStop is aware that this portion through the four V holdings track is already in the city of Laredo. The buffer, Elan Cuatro Vientos, is obviously the city of Laredo. Four V holdings came in several years ago with an application, that portion is in the city of Laredo. I think if TechStop's concern is that they're, they're spending money in the city, I think we may be talking to the wrong person, because, like you mentioned, TechStop allows this money to be spent inside municipalities. But at this point, obviously, the applicants would never want to do anything to risk any of the funding. You know, I think the best case moving forward is, since this is gonna eventually go to council, what we would like to, to, to see is, is an approval, let us move to council in that timeframe. The applicant, the engineer, and staff will all get together with TechStop to really sit down and clarify the situation, or come up with a consensus, and also involve the county, and then once this goes to council, we'll have more of a cohesive answer for what the next move is. So this would not, this, we still have more steps to go, but if we get a denial here, then we're looking at a supermajority at council, then it just throws, throws the process off. I'd love to table this till the next meeting, but schedule-wise, I don't think it's.
We're much in line, too.
So, you know, I'd love to table it, since this just kind of came up this week, but if we get the time between now and council's, yeah.
Well, there's three meetings, if I'm not mistaken, to get the annexation done, so there's plenty of time, and then one of those meetings at city council where, if for whatever reason things go south, the council could then at that point in time stop the annexation and deny the annexation process. So there's time for you guys to flip out the nuts and bolts by us not having to delay this process.
I, I think, I think there's just a fundamental, just maybe a misunderstanding at the TechStop level of what is proceeding happening.
I think that needs to get clarified is what, as the, was pulled up in terms of, I think it's a state statute that you were referring to, Dr.? It's a state statute that says the annexation must include the county road on both sides, and I think that's what needs clarity right now, because on that state statute, if you read it verbatim, then yeah, there is a problem there. But I think we have a way, a mechanism by going through it, and at the same time, if the state statute does prevail, well then at that point in time, the city can stop it at the first reading, or the second reading, or whatever.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and as it sits right now, the land is not a road. It may become a road in thirty days.
I agree, yes, the state statute does say it's a county road. But now it could be a county road, right?
Unfortunately, right now, it's not a county road. It's not a county road.
Oh, okay, nobody's accepted that plaque authentication.
Hasn't, that's correct.
Okay, so then, yeah, that becomes a even more of an issue.
It's just one of those.
More of an issue, yeah. 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 That reading, Mr. Bim, is all big time now, because in the annexation, the state's gonna say, you've got to annex this particular piece of property also, even though it's plotted and not recorded. Yes, sir. Yes, cases here.
All right, this is a public hearing, one more thing, Chairman, we do agree on the comment of the zoning, coming in. The official zoning that we applied for was B four, and, and we do, not on all of them, but on this one, track one, going from B four to B three.
It's adjacent to, it's adjacent to everyone, so yeah.
We'll agree, we'll agree, this track here, the one that we're talking about now, south of Lomas del Sur, and adjacent to the, to the sports complex.
Number one. You agree to it?
B three.
B three?
B three.
I'm still at B four. Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners from here?
No, it's fine.
Okay. Anything else that you'd like to add?
Wait. No, sir.
All right, thank you. This is still a public hearing, anybody else wishes to speak in favor? In favor of the annexation? In favor of the annexation? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation? Against the annexation? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
Let me make a comment before we bow to the Senate, Mr. Chairman. The fact that, that the road has not. That before the project comes ahead, comes on ahead, before permitting on it, that we make sure that that has already been granted to the city of Laredo, because otherwise, then what we're doing here is against the, the, the ordinance that.
But I think, either way you look at it, I think the best thing to do is, if we're moving forward, there's still have work to do, figure out what state statute would apply, and then if they can't work it out, the city council will have to kill it.
And spill it. Just a reminder, this is a recommendation to council.
I agree, I agree, but what I'm saying is, there's still work that needs to be done here that truthfully should have been done before this thing got to us, to be honest with you. It really shouldn't be this long. I mean, everybody should have done their homework, and, you know, they might come in with the intel and say, hey, guess what, I got a little surprise here for you. That's, we need to do a better job of, you know, analyzing all this data and making sure that we got the right information going forward, but at this point, I'm open to any motions from the council or anything.
I can make the motion, I'll make the, for this one, I'll make the motion to approve the item and with positive recommendation. The second comment of.
The zoning.
The zoning, with, recommend, recommend to a B three. So approve the zoning and approve the annexation.
Second, we have a motion in the second, almost in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Those agrees? All right, the motion carries. The next item is a public hearing, recommendation of annexation of voluntary annexation of initial zoning of R one A. And a B four, a highway district, and a tract of land total of three hundred and seventy point six seven acres. More or less, describe limits and bounds, it says, literally known as annexation track two, Cuatro Vientos located east of Cuatro Vientos Road, and north of Wenzel Road. Yes, Mr. Chairman? This is a public hearing, anybody who's, I'm sorry, make a presentation. Make a presentation, all right?
For the record, the applicant is Cuatro Vientos South Limited, engineer of record is topside civil group, Manuel Escamilla, representative. Proposed use residential and commercial, and the proposed initial zoning is developed in this R one A, and a portion of B four. General location?
Track two.
Track two. Location, we already been through some of these, so.
If you want to track one of these directions? Yeah. Three. 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 This one.
You saw B four in that? R one A and B four.
Okay.
That's wouldn't feel that way.
Go ahead. Okay, and go ahead, well, sorry, my bad, sir. And similar situation is evident, staff does not support the proposed annexation nor the proposed zoning of the B four.
It's track two.
Uh, that's two, track two.
That's track two.
Did I skip it?
That supports track two.
Is that, did I skip it? I apologize, it got, I, staff supports, staff does not support the initial zoning of B four, sorry about that.
All right. Okay, now let me ask you a question before we go ahead and ask for public comment. Put the mic back up there and show me what the zoning that they're requesting is for the B four and the R one A. I think that's what the commissioner ought to see here.
We're dealing with track two. It's not here. You know what, let me, yeah, better. So, who was this one? Who's this, right?
The B.
Okay. The wedge, right? Which, wait. You see that?
Darlo, Mr. Niero?
Here we go.
Pita la capa.
They're all glad, right? This is the portion that's the B four right here. Where? And then the, the area to the north would be R one A.
We have a subdivision that is residential, right, by the B four, that correct?
Mm-hmm.
With, that buffer?
Would be, that's, staff right here is recommending the B three.
A B three for that, too?
Yes.
Okay. And then the rest of the track would be, so that's the only portion that would be that they're asking for a B four zone?
Correct.
And that small track that is adjacent to the loop?
Right. And this would be R one A.
Can you raise it up a little?
Sure.
No. Perdón.
Okay.
Mi arriba para abajo tú. Aquí dice también B four. Okay. I made you.
Now with two lots, that's a, that's a, let me, let me do this.
The one that's beside block one, phase two, it says B four.
Yeah, that's the one.
Did you see?
That's the one.
That's the one that we just changed?
Yeah, to B three.
To a B three?
Yeah.
Let's, let's do this.
It's really two lots, and it's looking for B four, and there's a road that buffers that B four, that street or something.
Three lots. What's this piece here?
Three lots.
Oh, three lots, and then this.
All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation and zoning?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ricardo de Arroyo, topside civil group, we agree with the support that we got from staff, and will agree also to the B three zone. Okay. Okay.
Just a minute, let me just continue to read. All right, anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the annexation and zoning? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation and zoning? Against? Okay. What are the wishes?
I'm wishing to approve. It'll be transparent.
Motion to approve, we are second. We're in the second, it's gonna be, now, the motion is gonna be?
B three.
B three. Annexation of B three, all right. So almost in favor of that motion, signify? Aye. Those against? Motion carries, thank you. The next item is a public hearing, recommendation of annexation of voluntary annexation and the initial zoning of R one A, and B four, this is B four, forty-two acres, this is known as track three, and it's located east of Cuatro Vientos Road and south of Wenzel Road.
For the record, the applicant is Cuatro Vientos South Limited, engineer of record topside civil group, and the proposed use residential and commercial, then R one A and B four. General location. Layout. Aerial view. Surrounding zoning. Future land use. And the staff recommendation, similar to one before.
It's the same issue with the first.
Same issue, it's the same. And this one, will you?
Yeah.
Okay. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation, in favor and the zoning?
Mr. Chairman, Ricardo de Arroyo, topside civil group, this is similar to the first one. We agree to the B three zone, and we ask that you approve it, so like, we can move forward the council.
All right, okay, all right. Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the, of the annexation is entered? Anybody else? Anybody who speaks against? Against? All right?
I'm wishing to approve.
Motion to.
B three.
Please. All right, we're second? Second, almost in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. All right, motion carries. The next item is a public hearing, recommendation of annexation of voluntary annexation of initial zoning of B four, on a tract of voluntary in twenty-two point eight one acres, more or less. So annexation track four, Cuatro Vientos four track, located east of Cuatro Vientos Road and south of Wenzel Road.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Cuatro Vientos South Limited, engineer of record topside civil group, proposed use is commercial, and the proposed initial zoning is B four. General location. Full view. Aerial photo. Surrounding zoning. Future land use. Survey. And the recommendation. Staff does not support, similar to the other.
But you do support the zoning?
We just want to do support the zoning, the initial zoning, correct?
All right, this is a public hearing, anybody who speaks in favor of the annexation and zoning?
Chairman, the Calle de Arroyo, topside civil group, we concur with staff's comments on the zone, and we ask that you proceed the same way as the previous zones on the first comment.
All right, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? Has this unchanged? The annexation has unchanged? Anybody who speaks against? The annexation is unchanged. All right?
I'll make a motion to approve and send a positive recommendation to the council on the annexation, and support staff recommendation on the initial zone.
Motion will be on second?
Second.
Second, almost, in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye? All right, those against? Motion carries. The next item is a public hearing, recommendation of annexation of voluntary annexation and initial zoning of B four, the tract of land total of fourteen point general acres. This is annexation track five, it's located east of Cuatro Vientos Road and south of
Future land use. Survey. And the staff recommendation, similar to the other, staff does not support the annexation, but does support the initial zoning.
All right. This is a public hearing. Anybody who speaks in favor of the annexation and initial zoning?
Mr. Chairman, Ricardo Villarreal, Top Site Civil Group. As the previous item, we're in support of the zone, like staff, and we ask you that you recommend a positive to the city council, like on the previous.
Okay. Thank you. Everybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation is unchanged? Against? All right? This is a public hearing. Anybody who speaks in favor of the annexation and initial zoning?
Mr. Chairman, Ricardo Villarreal, Top Site Civil Group. As the previous item, we're in support of the zone, like staff, and we ask you that you recommend a positive to the city council, like on the previous.
Okay. Thank you. Everybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the annexation is unchanged? Against? All right?
Before we vote, Mr. Chairman, before you close the party meeting, track number five, I noticed that staff is supporting the, the B four, and it is the same situation as the track number four, but so I would support a B three where instead of going on a B four, based on the fact that actually that, that property is not, is not fronting the Cuatro Ventos Road, even though the, the owner might be the same owner that, as a, as a track line adjacent to track number five, but putting a B four on that location, known as El Sur, it might impact adversely to the, to the area. I would recommend a B three if, if I would be okay with the engineer.
Let me show the, the map again. I don't know where. So the, um, the track that's being annexed right now, Commissioner, let me guess, is this one. It's right behind an existing track that's R one that needs to be rezoned to B four, but this track is abutting Cuatro Ventos roadway on the major highway that a B four is required. The only reason this is not included is because it's already in the city of Rado and it goes through a different process, the rezone process. So you'll be seeing, um, these two, um, tracks in front of track annexation four and annexation five come in as a, just a simple, well, I say simple, a, a more plain, uh, rezone from R one to a B four because they are abutting highway frontage. Um, we added this track so it can give you the depth of what B four, um, of commercial business is required.
But, but if I, that's assuming that we're gonna go ahead and approve the B four, see? And, um, right now, being that we approved the B, the B three right across the street from, from the existing track.
No, that was a B four, it was approved B four.
Okay.
The staff supported the track four and it got approved as a B.
That was a B four?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Then I'll go ahead and take the comment back, Mr. Chairman. Okay? And I apologize, engineer.
Okay, that's over here. Thanks.
As we have a session, others in favor of the motion to approve? Hi, those against? Motion carries. Next item is a public hearing recommendation of the ordinance of voluntary annexation and initial zoning of R one on a track of land total of three, four acres. Uh, this is known as annexation track six, Kilimanjaro Track, located north of Hickoff Road, um, and Hookum Hill is Bullard Club, and the rest of the National Bureau.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Kilimanjaro Properties Limited, engineer of record is second engineering. Proposed, uh, use is the school site falling under the residential R one. General location. Layout. Aerial view. An additional aerial view, this surrounding zoning, future land use, survey, and the recommendation from staff. Staff supports the proposed annexation, and staff supports the initial zone.
All right. Okay, is the public hearing, anybody who speaks in favor of the annexation and zoning?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Will Secca, second engineering, and we refer of the annexation, and we don't have any true, any of the comments.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Secca from the commission?
No.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against? Against? All right? Everybody wishes a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? Others in favor of the motion signify by saying aye? All right? Those against? Motion carries. Next item, public hearing, recommendation of annexation of voluntary annexation and initial zoning of R one on a track of land total of sixteen point seven five five acres, known as annexation track seven. Uh, this track is located north of Union Pacific Boulevard and west of East Point Drive.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Richmore Holdings Limited and Kilimanjaro Properties Limited, the engineer of record is Terris South Engineering, the proposed use is industrial, and the proposed initial zoning is M one. General location. Layout. Aerial. Surrounding zoning. Future land use. An additional survey of the area. And staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed annexation, and staff supports the initial zoning.
All right, thank you. Is the public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor? In favor of the annexation and initial zoning?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission.
My name is Heidrak Oonsalis, we're Terris South Engineering, and we are in favor of the annexation.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against? Against the, against the annexation is unchanged? All right?
I'll make a motion to approve the annexation.
Second? Others in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item, public hearing, recommendation of annexation of voluntary annexation and initial zoning of R one A on a track total of twenty point seven three acres, known as annexation track eight, located east of Cuatro Ventos Road and south of Concord House Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Mr. Torgasai Junior, engineer of record is Portis Engineering, the proposed use is residential, and the proposed initial zoning for this development is R one A. General location. Layout. Aerial photo. Surrounding zoning.
I have a bunch of, yeah.
Future land use.
I have a couple of arms.
Survey of the property. And the staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed annexation, and staff supports the initial zone.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation and the initial zone?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. We're under Lake Forest Park Consulting, and we concur with all the comments.
All right, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation and the initial zone? Anybody who wishes to speak against the proposed annexation and, and initial zone? All right?
Motion to approve.
Second? Anybody in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. The next item is the consideration of the following preliminary plots, preliminary reap plots, I am seven A, preliminary consideration of the plot of K, Drive, Radial Dedication Plant, the tennis dedication of Radial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Berde Corp, N D A Charred Trust, engineer of record is Portis Dance Engineering, the proposed use is dedication, Radial Way and zoning for this development is M one. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plan. Comments from planning, water utilities and traffic safety. Additional comments from utility coordination, and the proposed motion.
All right, so what is the issue here, Ollie? So, we brought in the engineer to talk a little bit about it, but, uh, in the discussion, my understanding is there's still more discussion to go on between Tech Stop and your client, I guess? And so, they decided to separate the two. The, the actual, uh, design before it was coming in together, they're separating this out.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Wayne with Portis Engineering, Commissioner, good to see you this evening. Sorry, I couldn't make it to the last meeting, I just, I just was not available. Well, this one came in last time by itself. Uh, carrier bridge was, has always been separated because it might have different timelines than the, than the surrounding, uh, subdivisions that we have going on. We wanted to keep it separate for, for a good reason. Um, and I'm just here to answer any questions. I couldn't be here last time. We, we agree with all the comments that the city has, and we are engaged with Tech Stop. We've had a couple of meetings with them. Uh, they have some current concerns that we have to, uh, take a look at, some traffic stuff, but, uh, as far as the city's comments to planning, uh, preliminary plots, we're fine with those comments.
So you, you have an agreement with the city to go ahead and build the road or what? If you dedicate the road?
I don't think that we have an agreement with the city at all, inasmuch as we're just presenting this preliminary plot to you, uh, this preliminary Radial Way dedication. Um, if we proceed, I, I, I remember seeing your comments, we would have to be built on, on the owners, she-owners dying, if that was your main concern.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the Radial Way dedication is gonna be strictly dedicating the Radial Way, but it's gonna stay with the city, or is it gonna stay on the?
No, sir, we're, we're presenting this the same as any preliminary plot, it's just a, it's just a Radial Way. It's subject to comments. The city engineer is not gonna sign off on any final plot to move forward and accept the Radial Way until we go through the standard of one stop shop receivables, which involve Tech Stop.
Okay.
So, uh, we're, there's no sneaky move or anything, is it?
I think it's a, it's a good move to get the preliminary to chairman, that way we can get the, with rolling on that section.
Well, I mean, yeah, I know why he's breaking up because he's working on Tech Stop and timeline sometimes, and that'd be, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and he does have, I think, next item that we had is he's got, uh, X number acres coming in with the plant.
That is preliminary.
So, I mean, you know, those things could have been also, because that, that whole is a, is a congested area big time. And, and it, you know, you put it in, I think, seven to five acres, you got one of the street coming in and, right there.
Seven.
Okay, so, those are the things that I was working on, I said, hey, well, you know, I mean, we need roads, we're zero, and we've gotta figure out how quickly can we build them to get, you know, if you're gonna go up some of your acres and industrial, you know, where are they going? How are we gonna get in and out as it is? I know they're working on a good plan to try to redo some stuff across the street, uh, of Unitec that might help Unitec. Uh, I know the city in Tech Stop have been looking at some changing roadway alignments and doing one way pairings and stuff like that that might help on that side. Uh, but at this one, I was more concerned about the timing of the road, to be honest with you, on how quickly that road could come into play because if we're gonna rely on a Tech Stop, do you know when the Tech Stop funding cycle for this road is, or do they have any money that they're proposing, or what do you know about that?
This, this road, the one where our Radial Way is?
Yeah.
Tech Stop's not gonna do anything on that, that.
They're willing to contribute to it, so it's almost.
As far as I'm concerned, it's a crossover, everything within the I thirty-five Radial Way.
What's gonna be used?
That's, you know, to, we'll see, you know? Uh, I, I know that there, I've seen schematics of it, but that's about it.
Yeah.
That's, there's a big gap, gap between a schematic and a, and a, and a bridge.
Yeah.
You know, as you know.
Yeah.
So, uh, we'll see, and, and we will be working with Tech Stop on this carrier road bridge thing. There are some, uh, you know, a lot of challenging elements ahead of us, you know? It's not, come on, they're not arms wide open with us, you know? They have a, we have a lot of studies to do, uh, that's why we agree with the traffic study that's in here, and we'll see what they, what they have to say. That's all I have to say at this point.
Okay. Any questions for the engineer? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plan, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Others in favor, signify by saying aye? All right? I am pleased, motion carries. Real soon, all right? About extension. Let me hear everybody now. The next item is a preliminary consideration of the plan of M D, a show industrial plant phase three.
Mr. Chairman, this, um, do you have that, real quick, I know that you closed the brief that Mr. Valina abstained, so that means that, that you need to vote.
Well, you're voting, you're voting for.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Resting. Ready? Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Berde Corp, engineer of record is Portis Dance Engineering, the proposed use is light industrial, and the zoning for this final lot development is M one. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plan. Comments from planning and traffic safety. The proposed motion.
Mr. Chairman, Wayne with Portis Engineering again, we agree with all the comments on this one. If you have any questions, I'd just.
I have questions from the commissioners. All right, what are the issues? The question?
Motion to approve subject to the comments.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. That's what I was gonna ask you. So you have a motion and a second, others in favor, you have a motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, we do have the five votes, so the motion carries. Next item is a preliminary consideration of the plan of, of, of Alexander Subdivision and Tennis Residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is D N J Alexander Investments, engineer of record is Surf Engineering Company, the proposed use is residential, and the zoning for this thirty lot development is B one. Two point nine four acres located north of University Boulevard and west of Fisher Smith Drive. Aerial view. Street view. And the proposed plan. Comments from planning and traffic safety. Marks of leisure and fire. And the proposed motion.
All right? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Frank Estella with Surf Engineering, and we concur with staff comments.
Okay. Any questions from the officials?
Just FYI, you asked the last time when it came forward with the zone change, uh, to the north of that was Alexander Phase twelve, that's under construction.
Okay, yeah. I saw that they removed.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Others in favor, signify by saying aye? All right, motion carries, thank you. The next item is preliminary consideration of replant of block one, block one, Belinda Plant into block one A and B, block one, block one, the tennis commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Eliad Limited, engineer of record is Top Site Civil Group, the proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this two lot development is M one. General location. General location, aerial view, street view, the proposed plot, comments from planning and traffic safety, and the proposed motion.
Mr. Chairman Wayne with thoroughst engineering again. We agree with all the comments on this one. If you have any questions, I'd just.
Any questions from the commissioners? All right. What are the issues? The commission?
Motion to approve subject to the comments.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. That's what I was gonna ask you. So you have a motion and a second, all those in favor, you have a motion signify by say no. Aye. All right. We do have the five votes, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is a preliminary consideration of the plot of, uh, Chris Taylor, Alexander Settlements, industrial residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is, uh, D and J Alexander Investments. Engineer of record is survey engineering company. The proposed use is a residential and the zoning for this thirty lot development is B one. Two point nine four acres located north of Union City Boulevard and west of Fisher Smith Drive. Aerial view, street view, and the proposed plot, comments from planning and traffic safety, parks and leisure and fire, and the proposed motion.
All right. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Frank Estor was survey engineer and, uh, we concur with staff comments.
Okay. Any questions from the first?
Just FYI, you asked the last time when it came forward, the zone change, uh, to the north of that was auxiliary phase twelve. That's under construction.
Okay. Yeah. I saw the board removed.
Yes, sir.
All right. So we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor signify by say no. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is preliminary consideration of replant block one, Belinda plant into lot one A and B, lot one, block one, the tennis commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is early out and limited. Engineer of record is topside civil group. The proposed use is commercial and the zoning for this two lot development is N one. General location, aerial view, street view.
Yes, sir.
With the proposed plot, comments from planning, traffic safety, with the proposed motion.
All right. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ricardo Villarreal, topside civil group. We concur with staff's comments.
All right. Thank you. Anybody that make a motion, any of us?
Yeah. Motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Taken. All right. All those in favor signify by say no. Aye.
Aye.
Everybody against? Motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the plot of the, uh, land, the tennis commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Manok Investments Limited. Engineer of record is Howling Engineering Survey Company. The proposed use is commercial, mini storage, and the zoning for this one lot development is B four. General location, aerial view, street view, and the proposed plot, comments from planning, fire and water utilities, traffic safety and utility coordination, and the proposed motion.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Um, for the record, me and Jimenez with Howling Engineering, um, we agree with most of the comments, uh, except for one of them. Not sure we agree or not, but, or we had several conversations that come with Mr. Vidality on the Tech Stop, uh, approval for the entrances. We did discuss, we did get together with Tech Stop. They said they won't, uh, issue any approvals for entrances at this point, at this time until we actually apply for one. Um, our client wants to wait until his property is platted, but they did tell us that there are agreements telling us that our property will have access, will, we want it, at least one. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that. I'm not sure if.
Okay. Comments, thanks, we can see it. Let me see.
Careful with Tech Stop or driveway entrance.
So that.
You could do that. The one-stop shop.
We have, we've talked to Tech Stop, they're very familiar with this case, so they're, they've been, they're aware, but yes, he would beat it before one-stop shop. I don't think that comment is really gonna prevent you from doing it, but Alan says a secure period from Tech Stop when you get your driver permit. But I don't think it's detrimental to your plan at all.
Okay, that, that's fine.
I mean, you still have to go through the process of applying to Tech Stop.
Right.
That's all it says.
That's worth it. We'll keep that one. Just kinda wanna open it up. Uh, one we do, uh, don't agree with is, uh, fire comment number one. It says fire hydrants required along the south side of highway fifty, three fifty-nine. Uh, we did, I did speak with, uh, Captain Vidality and I did get an email from him saying that we're not required to do that, um, but the comment still stayed here on the, on the, on the agenda, so we can strike that one out. And the reason for this is when, when this plat initially came in, it came in with the Argendi property as one plat and it was gonna be along highway three fifty-nine. We, they separated, now we're doing our individual plat and we're not even close to, well, we're not highway three fifty-nine.
Is there a water line there? It's on the north side.
Yes.
There's a water line on, on the south side, right? Yeah. On three fifty-nine, there is a, in the south, so they have to bore under it.
Go forward. Yes.
So we've been.
Yeah, no, he is correct. We're only requiring hydrants along with their plating, so that, that other piece, that's not part of you, so he, our, our designer saw it initially and he just assumed it was all together, so he was requiring that other piece and then once we review it, we saw we came back and only on that he's plating, so he, he is correct.
So we can strike comment number one. All right? Comment carries.
Yes, comment number one.
All right.
Um, the, the other one we're not in accordance with is, uh, water utilities, comment number one as well, says coordination with existing design of neighboring is required. Um, again, this one is kinda goes hand in hand with, uh, this plat came in initially about a few years back. It was together with the Agdi Digi tracks and, uh, now something happened in negotiations where we decided, you know, to do it on our own and obviously they're doing it separately and we just want this plat to go in by itself, right? Whatever requirements are part for us, for our track.
Well, I think that's something that you can figure out at the one-stop shop. This is preliminary anyway. I mean, I wish I could tell you what, and strike that comment, but I think the comment there is, is it's a water utilities comment, but, you know, they've got an existing design or something and I wanna see how you're gonna tie into that. And that's something you can discuss it, you know, and, and resolve it at, at doorstop shop.
Okay. Yes.
But we're gonna strike that out?
No, no, because, I mean, we can't.
No, and I agree with you.
No, I mean, they, they could work it out at doorstop shop.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's preliminary.
Don't, but we, we can take out is the one for the fire hydrants for three fifty-nine.
Number one.
We did meet, I'm sorry, we did meet with utilities department and they want us to coordinate with, with the adjacent owner. Um, our client, uh, we already attempted that with our client and, uh, he, there, there's just no communication there, so that, that's why we're trying to remove this comment. Utilities does want us to sit down or coordinate with them.
I think the only thing you can do is say, you know, we tried, they say no, so now we need to move.
Yeah.
That's all you can do, as in making it work.
Yeah.
If you're a property owner engineer or property owner is not willing.
Yes.
Then that's, you know, what you need to do and just say, you know, we, we would have loved to have done this, but with no cooperation on the other side, you cannot deny us from moving on with our project.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, because if it's, uh, it's not gonna be, that's, okay?
Yes.
Anything else?
No, we agree with them. We're winning with hearts.
Okay. All right. All right.